Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. We're starting earlier than normal because we're going to proceed to a closed-door session. But first, City Clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn to our counsel. Mr. Morgan, if you'd like to make the official announcement.
Yes, thank you. Members of the City Commission pursuant to Section 286.011 Subsection 8 Florida Statutes, an attorney-client closed-door session will now commence to discuss the case of City of Boynton Beach, a Florida municipal corporation plaintiff versus JKM BTS Capital LLC, defendant, Palm Beach County Circuit Court, case number 50-2020 CA 012780 XXXX MB. The time is now 5:01 PM. The meeting is anticipated to last approximately one hour. Attending the meeting are Mayor Tyipen Sera, Vice Mayor Angela Cruz, Commissioner Woodrow Hay, Commissioner Thomas Turkin, Commissioner Amy Kelly, interim City Manager Jim Stables, myself, Assistant City Attorney Quentin Morgan, City Special Litigation Counsel Thomas Baird, and Joanne O'Connor, and a court reporter at this time. And it's appropriate that we retire in the executive session. And following the executive session, we will return to announce the conclusion in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And for those of you listening online, we'll be returning around 6:00 PM to resume the normal City Commission meeting. This meeting is recessed.
The recording has resumed.
Good evening, everybody, and again, welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting. We have just returned from a closed-door session to discuss litigation matters. I'm going to turn now to our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Morgan, to provide the announcement.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, the time is now 6:01 PM, and the closed-door session has now concluded. And the closed-door portion of the City Commission meeting has now terminated, and we are back in the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Again, this meeting is called back to order. I'm going to ask if the City Clerk could begin roll call again.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
She, well, she's got to say it.
Here. Commissioner Hay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. And before we proceed to invocation and pledge of allegiance, let me just read into the record our rules of civility and decorum. As always, commissioners, if you'd like to speak, please wait to be recognized by the mayor and not interrupt any speaker. Comments from the public must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Public attacks, insults, all of that rudeness strictly prohibited, as well as any disruptive behaviors from the audience. Failure to follow these rules may and you being escorted out of these chambers. I'll provide a warning first, as always, but please govern yourselves accordingly. Let's begin with the invocation for this evening, which will be led by Debbie Majors from First Presbyterian Church, led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Thomas Turkin. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Pastor Amelie Ash could not be here this evening, is that's why I'm here, from Presbyterian Church. She's with her mother in hospice care. So if we could just keep them in thoughts as well. Let us pray. Wonderful God, thank you for everyone here today. We gather as city leaders, first responders, and caring citizens to seek the betterment of our neighborhoods and community. We seek your wisdom and will for our city. For we have an idea, visions, and plans, however only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. We know that in our desire for change that nothing is ever in vain. Even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Strengthen our confidence in you and guide us to be our best. Give our leaders wisdom and vision. May they operate in trust and transparency, and give us all patience and understanding as we seek to work together for the betterment of our community. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count. We lift this prayer in hope and in love. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Ms. Majors. And we will have Pastor Ash's thoughts in our prayers. Moving on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections to our agenda. I do have one item, but let's go around the dais first. Commissioner Turkin, I see your hand is up.
Yep. I got a couple of things here. For 13B, that we were going to come to the next meeting with our top three candidates. And so, the next commission meeting, so I'd like to see if you guys, if there's a clerical error there, or if you guys are okay to come with our top three candidates for the election of the City Manager appointment. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, I think my request was if we could all bring our top five, and we're going to narrow it down to our top three. But if you already have your top three, or if anybody else already has their top three, you know, it's not a requirement to have five, but that was just my suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. As long as we have our top three by the end of the day, that's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I miss her.
No worries. But that's perfectly okay if you've narrowed it down.
The other thing, I'd like to get an update on the, if there's any update with the case of SJ. I'd also like to get an update with the height limitation ordinance that the commission requested, that I asked staff to look into, draft that language. I'd also like to get an update on the conceptual design for the dog park in District 3, and also the park in Leisureville. And then I'd also like to direct staff to look at a trespass ordinance for violation of the rules of conduct here at the commission meetings.
So, one thing, there was a lot there. So I heard update on the height. Is that currently, is that not on the agenda? Or at least future agenda? I thought it maybe was on there. Let me see. I do not see it. Okay. Could we please have that updated on the agenda? All right. I don't see it there. You're correct, Commissioner. In terms of the park, I see the Leisureville Park, the one for District 3. I do not see that. Okay? So let's make sure to have that under future agenda. I just want to double check, right? Yes. Let's make sure to have that under future agenda, and please speak with staff so we can expedite, you know, that process. Okay? Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Commissioner. Was there anything else that I missed? The park, the height, the trespass ordinance? That would be a matter for the City Manager?
Mm-hmm.
City Manager, is that something that you want to discuss today, or is that something you want to work on with legal and combat? What is your preference?
I'm sorry, are you speaking of the height or the?
The trespass. Commissioner, do you want to elaborate on that so we can give them some direction?
So other.
Excuse me, sir. Let him finish. Go ahead.
So I think we need to have law in order here, and we need to have accountability if the rules are not followed, especially if people are running into the back of the parking lot after a commission meeting. I would like staff to look into what other municipalities have done. Because if commissioners, family members are here in the audience, and they feel threatened, and I'm getting phone calls from staff that they're, I'm sorry, not from staff, but from my constituents, that they're afraid to come to the meetings, that's not, what kind of government are we running here? People should be feeling safe here at City Hall.
So I see that Vice Mayor, you're nodding your head, and I'm certainly open to looking at and revisiting our ordinance for civility and decorum. I think that would be the appropriate place to review. This is the second I've asked you not to do that today. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I do want to make a comment. Towards the end of last meeting, there was a lot of aggression and disrespectful behavior that happened in the back of the room, and people physically coming towards the front of the room. My family happened to be here. They were very uncomfortable, very scared. I felt personally very threatened and very uncomfortable. And then we had to wait for the police to go around to make sure there was no more threats. But the behavior towards the end of last meeting is unacceptable, and it's not welcome here, and we're not going to tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the City Manager for you to prepare that along with our City Attorney and bring it back to us.
I'll move.
Thank you. Anything else from Commissioner Turkin before we proceed to the others?
The update with SJ.
All right.
Just as the other meeting, this is still in an investigative umbrella. There will be no updates provided at this meeting, and there are none available.
Understood. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Kelly?
I do not have anything.
All right. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Nothing to add.
All right. And Commissioner Hay?
Yes, I don't have any disclosures at this time, but I would like to add an item on unfinished business. I would like to add a continued discussion about PBSO. And then I would like for that, because of the number of calls and emails and phone, you know, public interest here, move that up to after the public hearing, I mean, the public audience. Got to be item four at the public audience.
I'm sorry. I don't think I understood you. You said unfinished business.
Well, I'm going to add, I'm going to add an item on unfinished business, but I'd like to move that item up.
Gotcha. Got it. All right. And, you know, in order to discuss that, I know, and as everybody knows in the public, we've just recently received the proposal, but is staff prepared to present anything on that today? City Manager?
Will be able to answer questions. Obviously, the proposal didn't have substance, so there, yes, we can provide information. It all depends on what the questions are. So, and I'll, and I'll give you that answer, and we'll certainly do our level best to provide information and answers back.
Okay. How do my colleagues feel?
Yeah, I agree. There's definitely some more discussion that needs to be had about this. Do we have any representatives from PBSO here to ask questions? Because I'd like to ask from both staff, PD, and then also PBSO, and really understand what this could look like, and get details, more of my, more telescopic details and answers, and compare what we have now.
I agree with you, Commissioner. I have as many questions as all of you. And my only concern is if staff is, you know, we just got this, there are no representatives. I'm not sure how much we can go into if we don't have enough information. But if you just want to have a general discussion, I'll have a general discussion. I just don't know what we can say, given the incomplete action we have at this point. How, you know, so you're okay with having this discussion despite?
I'd like to have the discussion when we have more details. And I think there's a lot of, for me, there's a lot of questions. You know, there's a lot of questions for me, so I would like to see more details, because this is going to be a very long conversation.
I agree. City Manager, when do you think would be the ideal time while you'll be finished with your review and discussions among staff, so we can have a more thorough and robust discussion about this?
So if the commission has questions, I'd certainly like to know what those are so we can go down the path that you all would like us to go down, instead of coming up with our own questions. So if there are specific questions you all are looking for, I think that's important in this perspective. We had a, for lack of a better term, a vendor provide a proposal to us that is lacking in substance, in my opinion. And that is for you to determine whether it was responsive to the request that you all placed. Generally, if a vendor is non-responsive, we don't go through that process in purchasing. We don't go and ask them a bunch of questions. We tend to eliminate them as a vendor. So that's just a general statement about how we deal with proposals and those types of things. The choice is yours. If you have specific questions, I would appreciate them being provided to staff so we can respond appropriately and have answers for you. But we can't, I can't forecast what your questions will be. So that's why I would prefer to have you all provide those questions to me, and I can certainly get them addressed in short order.
One of the reasons I brought this up is because we have several speakers here tonight, as well as many online. I've got numerous phone calls and emails. There is a very strong public interest here, and I just, that's why I say after the public audience that we can have this discussion. It may be a short one. We don't have to answer every detail, but I think we sort of ought to, the public at this stage, is to have that discussion as we move forward.
Understood. And with that, I will agree and concur. You know, we do have public comment section, so one way or another, we're going to hear from the public. And if you want to have an initial discussion, Commissioner, I'm open to that. My only hesitation is that I have not seen any more information outside of that proposal, which doesn't contain a lot of information. And so I think after staff has done their due diligence, then I'll have even more questions, but let's have that preliminary discussion. I'm more than okay with that. All right. So we've heard from Commissioner Hay. Was there anything else, Commissioner, in terms of agenda? Okay. And Vice Mayor, we're good. As for me, I would like to add one item under new business, if that is all right with my colleagues. So it would be number 11B. I would like to, just for us, to discuss possibly hiring an independent outside counsel to deal with legal matters pertaining to town square. I think it's time for us to have a fresh pair of, look into the situation as we proceed for the next chapter of that story. And I'll leave it at that. Is that all right, my colleagues? Let's have that discussion. Okay. So hearing nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right. So the agenda is amended. We're now moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. Let's begin now with Commissioner Kelly. Any disclosures or informational items?
I do not have any disclosures.
Okay. Commissioner Turkin?
Yes, I've spoken. What's the new agenda item concerning PBSO? We're doing this discussion, correct?
Yes, right after public audience.
So I've spoken with Colonel Rahoe. I've met Captain Byron Smith.
Discussion. Is when he wanted it on the agenda? Okay, just, yes.
Sure.
I said that.
I've spoken to many police officers here in Boynton, many residents, and a couple SO officers, deputies.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Cruz?
I have no disclosures.
Okay. And Vice Mayor, Commissioner Hay?
No discussion.
All right. No disclosures or informational items for me as well. We're now going to move on to public audience. There are no announcements, community, and special events, and presentations this evening. So again, for those of you who would like to speak today, we're going to begin within person, and then we'll proceed with those online. If you are joining us virtually, please make sure to keep your digital hands raised. After everybody in the room has spoken, that will be the end of all of the hand raising online. For those online, I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. The rules are the same as always. Every person has three minutes. Public comments must be directed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual. And we're going to keep folks all here. There's no need to yell. There are microphones, and we're all here patiently listening and taking notes, and tolerate any sort of insults or anything like that. That's just not necessary. Okay. So let's begin public comments. We have two podiums. Please approach the podium, and we'll begin the timer. And you may begin when you are ready. Let me switch this over. And I just want to say to the people in the back, please do not block the timer. All right. Begin when you're ready, Ms. Oyer.
Susan Oyer, excuse me, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. So I think the only thing I need to address on PBSO, in addition to my emails and Facebook things, is I'm heck no to PBSO. Moving on to the many other issues we have going on in the city and that need to be addressed, and that I've brought for years and still have no resolution, so we do consider these my list. We need to be going forward with white roofs. Thank you, Commissioner Turkin, for actually taking notes. There is something called the White Roof Project. I've been pushing for this for years. And we, as a country, if the whole southeast part of the US went back to all white roofs like it was when I was a kid, and many of you were kids, and it was nothing but white roofs down here, it'd be the equivalent of taking every car off the streets in the United States. It'd make a tremendous impact global warming-wise, and we can all see in the news what the heck's going on, and we need to be doing our part. And there's no excuse for not demanding white roofs out of our residents, which is exactly what it was for decades in this city. On the second of all, we need to start moving forward on getting rid of palm trees. We've been saying this for years. You have your sustainability report that says how horrible palm trees are. It's fine to have some palms at the front of your development or whatever, but they provide no canopy coverage. They provide little to any CO2 reduction, and they're basic, they are grass, they're not trees. So we really need to be looking and moving forward on getting rid of palms, not allowing new palms to be planted, which is what Miami, I believe it's Miami Beach has done. There's no new palms going forward. We also need to look at the Norfolk Island pines, which, you know, fall apart during storms and become projectiles. They grow to 250 feet tall. They're banned in some areas. That is something we should be looking at. We should also be looking at possibly giving tax credits or finding a way to mitigate the costs of tree removal, to take out these nuisance trees like the palms, the coconuts, and the Norfolk Island pines. And I would highly suggest that we look at actually finding people who are not staying on top of these trees, because I've got tons of pictures from my neighborhood alone of people who, you know, these are all over the power lines, and then, of course, the power goes out. And I think I'm going to run out of time, so I'm going to just hit up one final thing, is we need to stop selling our water to other cities. I am tired of me, and I have no grass. I'm mulch and gravel only in my yard, but single-family homes are what pay the taxes in this city, and the people with single-family homes are not allowed to water their yards more than twice a week. We are on serious water limitations, but yet, if you're in a condo apartment, whatever, you can waste all the water you want to. And why? Because we're selling our water to like nine or 10 other cities. So as these contracts come up, it's time to say no. The water wars have started in Africa. They're obviously going to be starting in Palm Beach County, and I think we should be a leader on this and say, stop wasting water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oyer. All right.
My name is Brenda Williams. I live at 337 Northeast 24th Avenue. I'm up here to strongly oppose you putting our police department with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I find you saying for us not to be offensive, but I find it offensive, because in the past 10 to 12 years, this same item came up again for us to privatize our police department, and it was turned down by the citizens of Boynton. Why are we keep revisiting this same situation when it's already been litigated on several different occasions? You're talking about there's no substance in the proposal that you all have gotten, that you could see what it's all about. And I sent emails to each of you commissioners when this first came up, and to me, this smells like a violation of the sunshine law. Because how in the world are you going to come up with privatize our police department, and you hadn't had any meetings yet? So that was the one thing that I wanted to say tonight, because you don't listen to the citizens. We didn't want all these high-rises built here in this city. We didn't want all these rental properties built here in this city. And I'm not talking about my Commissioner Hay, because I speak to him personally, but I sent each of you an email, and I heard nothing back from you. And I find that as very offensive when you say for us to give you respect, but then you don't give us respect in return. So if somebody have any time to check into that, see if you all have violated the sunshine law.
All right. We'll go back and forth on the podiums. Doesn't matter which. Please proceed when you're ready.
Good evening. My name's Harry Woodworth. I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place. I'm 40 years. Couple of things, but the one I wanted to bring up first was, last week, for the first time in the 25 years I've lived there, we had a discussion with bulk waste pickup about what they would and wouldn't pick up. I've been putting the same stuff out for 25 years, same house, same place. They didn't pick it up. It was too big. I'm okay with that. What I would ask you to do, as a city, and I've asked public waste to-do twice already, because this has been going on for about a year now, a lot of confusion on our street about what day to put it out. We know it's Thursday, but they put it out all hours of the day and week, starting Monday, and it sits there all week, so our street looks like hell. Excuse me. And then when they don't pick it up, then when they do pick it up, you don't know if they're going to pick it up. I haven't had it picked up on a pickup day for so long, I can't remember the last time. The only thing I'm asking is, whatever the standard is, it's probably a good standard, I think, two refrigerators, please communicate it and be consistent on it. And if you don't have enough trucks, part of the problem is they're erratic pickup. People don't know when the heck to put it out. Like I said, 25 years, I've got the same yard, same trees, I've put the same stuff out there. I'm 73 years old. If I can put it out there, sure as heck, someone can pick it up. But just let us know what those rules are, and whatever they are, enforce them. Do it. What you say you're going to do. That said, I would like to compliment the people that showed up. We called, they came. We had a very effective disconversation. They were very professional. They were very polite. And your new director stepped up to the plate. So, I mean, just if you could just be consistent in the communication and how you enforce that, that would be very handy. Thank you. Oh, I want to add last thing. I get the PBSO thing, and I don't know if I'm in favor of it or not. I read that proposal, you guys somewhere, there's nothing in it. I mean, it looks like something my boss asked me to do the night before a presentation. It's terrible, and there's nothing in it, this substance. Put the facts out. Let us see what the facts are, and then we can make some, have some discussion and make some decisions. I've talked to most of the people in my neighborhood. Most of you guys know me. I was the anchor president three times. I've yet to find one person, not even one, who thinks it's a good idea. Thanks.
Cindy Falca de Carrado. I'm bringing up again about the LGBTQ flag. How long does that stay there? LGBTQ month is only for the month of June, and that we pay to have it repainted, and we pay to have a video camera on it, and we pay to make sure it stays up and coming. I know that you can't answer me. I would like an answer, though. How long does that stay on our roadside? As I said, as a heterosexual, I really would like to see a heterosexual month with the same situation, where we do a flag or we eliminate them altogether. My other thing about the police department, you know, as this gentleman just said, it's pros and cons. What you think you're going to benefit in the long run, I think that we're going to lose in the long run. So for a helicopter, for whatever else they can do, for what they won't be doing for us as a city, and what we probably, even though we're putting in, I think, perimeters to stop them, if they, if we do a trial run, I think we're going to get run over. I think we will lose our hometown, our own police department. What I think we need to do is reform our own police department, bring in some constitutional sheriffs. Let's educate them. Let's make sure there's 40 hours a year of education on the Constitution instead of four hours. See, if they know the Constitution, you won't have any problem. You won't continually have this issue, because if you do no harm and you do not trespass, there's no reason for all of this kind of police policing going on. there's no reason for all of this kind of police policing going on. I think that we can do better. I know we can. I know that we can bring in some really good, possibly good leader, captain. Look for one, Mac, I've told you about him before. He brings in constitutionalists who will abide by the Constitution because it is about we, the people. You actually are an employees. We, you work for us. We come here as a spokesperson and we expect you, especially each one in your district, to represent each one of us. That's why you're up there on a dais. And so I want you to respect us and we want to respect you because I know your job is not easy. I know it's not easy, but I'm asking you, as we are your constituents, to please really listen to what we're sharing with you. We've lived here a long time, a lot of us are homeowners. I don't know how many up on the dais are homeowners. I don't know what affects you or doesn't affect you, which affects us. And it does affect us and it is our tax dollars that pay your salaries. So I'm asking you to really be attuned and I know that you care, so let's go deeper and let's really listen to what's being said and what's not being said. Because what you might not be hearing is that you, we will lose our police force if you give it up, even on a trial basis, just like that ten-dollar piece of property that that clause was not put in there and they sold it for a million dollars and now they're building another high-rise. Something's not right with this picture and I ask us to do better, to do our due diligence and let's listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Evangeline Ward, fifteen eighteen North Seaquest Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm here in reference to the merger or the overtaking of PBSO for Boynton. And we saw the proposal, but it seems like it's a smokescreen. Bottom line, we really need to know their resume. Okay? So normally they had a budget for forty-two million, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. But see, if you sit down and you think about the cost of what you're doing before you build a house, you determine if I'm able to sustain that house, okay? But when I went and I did some factual checking on PBSO, do you know in, from January two thousand sixteen to May two thousand seventeen, they had over thirty-one million dollars in lawsuits that they had to settle because of killing people or injuring people? And out of, it was eight cases that they closed out. And out of eight of them, six of them, they were mental health crisis. One young boy, he was a seventeen-year-old boy with Down Syndrome. How can you justify that? That I thought he was a threat? One man in Boca Raton, he was sixty-one, going through a mental health crisis. And I want you to understand, mental health is not a crime. And this is what, this is what we really need to know. And they began and says, you know, PBSO has this type of complex where I kill first and I ask questions later. We don't need that here, okay? And so in the midst, you know, when they were even talking about PBSO and one young man, twenty years old, twenty years old, these are facts. They stopped him, came up behind him for an infraction on a bicycle. So when the young man, twenty years old, went to adjust his phone to make sure that his phone didn't fall out of his pocket, in seven seconds, this young man was gunned down and he's paralyzed now. That lawsuit cost them twenty-point-four million dollars. So I want you to understand, that does not meet our budget. Checking on PBSO, I found out next to Dade County, they have fatalities than anybody. Are you ready for this in Boynton Beach? And in the midst, you understand, when you, you really think about, you put the thirty-one million and they still got some more that they got to solve. When you put that thirty-one million dollars with this forty-two thousand dollar budget, do we have the monies to sustain them? Do we have the guts? Do we have the concern for our citizens that it's okay that you shoot first and ask questions later? Because I'm trying to adjust my phone. Either a seventeen-year-old Down Syndrome boy, how do you explain that?
Thank you. Next speaker, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Ward, longtime Boynton Beach resident. I looked up the word loophole, which means technicality that allows a person or business to avoid the scope of law or restrictions without directly violating the law. After carefully reviewing the proposal, I found it contains highly suggestive verbiage in which one can conclude that the intentions of the PBSO merger is being handled with unclean hands. The document is layered with loopholes. I find it odd that the concerns that the community has voiced throughout each of these city council meetings regarding this merger has been strategically laced within the proposal as an attempt to entice or appeal to its readers, its abate. These are tactics often used to prep by predators or sexual predators, rapists, molesters, traffickers to lure their prey, thus resulting in an unfavorable outcome, the very thing we need protection from. I wish there was a way that we could see the true intentions of individuals, just like the labels on clothing, before buying into the facade of a used car salesman pitch. What they want you to think versus what you are actually getting. Let's talk money. PBSO has a healthy price tag of forty-two million, listing their benefits, receive and their accolades. Yet with the pretty price tag, you will also inherit the liabilities, which include but are not limited to the plethora lawsuits that continue to pile up and with one in particular that led to a twenty-one million dollar settlement, which is half the proposed merger price. Are we being pimped to pay the lawsuits they have acquired? Let's talk state-of-the-art technology. We have that. In a past city council meeting, we were informed that said documents were pertaining to additional, to protect and serve the city was indeed on the governor's desk awaiting approval in the amount of thirty-five million dollars. That is a savings of seven million dollars. PBSO state-of-the-art technology does not include body cams, in which it was deemed necessary as a show of good faith in building transparency with our PD and the community. How is it that the county's largest law enforcement agency is not equipped with body cams at all? In fact, in twenty-sixteen, Bradshaw stated, body cams for officers are great, but it does not, he does not believe they prevent incidents. And getting one for each of his sixteen-hundred deputies would cost about nineteen million dollars, money he rather spend on more deputies. However, he would rather pay twenty million, twenty million dollars in settlements. They're planning on bringing two hundred and seventy-seven staff members in this package and I really don't understand why we should allow them to come in, especially with a leader who has the mentality like that of the OK Corral to shoot first. Answers that cannot be attained by those who are deceased. If we have forty-two million dollars laying around, let's put it towards using what they have as a template.
Thank you.
Bryce Graham, second vice president, National Action Network, Central Florida Chapter, vice president, second vice president, National Action Network, Central Florida Chapter. Let me address a few issues here. For the past seven and a half months, we've been coming to this city hall to demand just half of SJ. And if you were threatened by our actions at the end of the meeting, that you adjourn and you told us that you would address our concerns and our issues in this city and you did not, let me tell you what. The thing that is under a threat is justice in this city. So if you feel threatened by us protesting in your city hall, then you have an issue. You're lucky that we haven't shown up anywhere else in this city to protest. And you, we come here in the city to address our First Amendment rights in a public place? Axe Palm Coast, what happened when they tried to trespass people out of their meetings? It got turned down by the judge, the eleventh circuit court judge. So talk about trespassing people in your city is bull crap. I will talk with the head of the ACLU against you all, talking about you're threatened. No, this community has been threatened when you're talking about bringing in the PBSO, who has one of the largest budgets in this country. Yet alone, don't talk about their use of force, uh, 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 cases. Come on, are you serious? And I know Chief DeJulio has signed off on the case. I know it's sitting just death. I know that Mark Song has received his termination. Let her, what the hell is going on in Boynton Beach? And I, as a civil rights leader, is like a DJ. I can turn the music up and turn the crowd up at the same time or I can cause a riot.
All right, Mr. Wright, when you're ready.
Yes, Bishop Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, current candidate of District Two Commissioner. Last commission meeting, and before then, when you put this protocol in here that when we address the issue, bring a issue to you all, you respond.
One second, Mr. Wright, I'm going to stop your time. If somebody could just stop that interruption, I want to give Mr. Wright his due time. Let's take care of that so you can speak freely. All right, Mr. Wright, please proceed.
Okay, again, Bishop Bernard Wright, District Two, current candidate for District Two Commissioner. And the last meeting, and before then, you put in a new protocol that, template to me, that we have to wait till the end of the meeting to get a response to our issues, which violates our rights because what you're doing is coercing us to have to stay and we have other things to do. Now, we sat here all night and you didn't address us. You adjourned, not you, not you, not you and not you, and no one had anything to say. But you had something to say when it was time to fire the city manager and thank you for that. But neither one of you all said anything. We have the mother of the child sitting right there asking for an update after seven months and you adjourned and you expect us to just what, be humble? Baby, we are ungovernable at this point in time. So running down there, it was me. Yes, because I have the courage to do what I need to do, having a constitutional right and an inalienable one at that, to piece of lumber, you understand, to redress this government, to address this government, redress the grievance. Let me explain something to you, the petition at this point, and you all just disrespect us, dishonor us and give us a disservice and you work for us. Said nothing about this. Now, three of you all have invited PBSO in here and you all are the three that will be voting and take only a three to two vote. She can't vote, she has to recuse herself because of a conflict of interest. Is it not a conflict of interest if three of y'all have put this up to bring a proposal and you all going to be the three that vote on it? Commissioner Hayes is the only one that's not. The deck is stacked, so one thing you could do, go back to history, don't bring it up, table it, guess what? Oh, take it to the ballot, a citizen referendum. We all have the right to vote on this. You all don't have that right to have authority to make a decision of this nature as grave as this, to bring the sheriff department in here, not Bradshaw. I'm wearing marks. History, baby, I am, with a legacy in this city, being disrespected, dishonored by you. And now you knew it was going to come in. You done did what you did. You ran on a AKA to God be the glory. You came out the box wrong. You will continue wrong and end wrong. Except in between, you get right, man. It's time for you to get right. Don't muddle us. We have a right, a constitutional right, and as a civil rights leader and an activist in this city and an advocate in this city for my people, especially District Two and this whole city in its entirety, until District Two is respected, there'll be no peace in Boynton. You have not seen nothing yet because America should be on fire. Fire and voices, fire and us standing up. We've been laying down and sitting down too long.
Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Dames, Post Office Box seven one three, Florida, zip code three three four two six. There's several issues I want to address tonight. First of all, I want to talk about the merger. And I've stated once before, several times, being a county employee for thirty-three years in government, I understand how this works, okay? The deal has already been made, okay? It's already been made, right? You've already made the deal to bring in the sheriff. You're just going through the protocol because if that's the case, Mr. Penziger, right? The cars that were taken down to the sheriff office in March and April, right? They've already been painted sheriff's colors, I understand. Okay, so you can sit there and try, we'll see, okay? We'll see. You're just going through the protocol, I understand, right? But I'm quite sure when the budget is approved and then the new fiscal year starts in October, then y'all probably announce then that the merger is coming because it's already been made. I ain't no fool. I got too much discernment and that's the Holy Spirit, okay? You're making fool the world, you can't fool me. I've been through this game before, okay? The second thing is I want to address, right? Mark Song, right? The little investigation that the Florida Highway Patrol did and talking about there was no, nothing? How can you chase somebody? If I chase behind you and I don't care if you got a lead in front of me and I'm on Boynton Beach Boulevard, if I'm behind you, I'm chasing you. I don't care how far I'm in front of you, if I'm behind you, that's a chase. Now, I don't know what kind of investigation, but I've been around it long enough to know government sticks with government. It's been like that from the days. That's how the laws were made before me and you were even born, Mr. Penziger. Okay, that's how the laws were made. So I understand the little bogus investigation that the Florida Highway Patrol did, right? But I can tell you this, right? When this thing really, really comes to the forefront, right? And it'd be different, right? Because if it was one of y'all kids or grandkids, the whole ballgame would change. It'll be different. It'll be different if it were one of y'all kids. You can't tell me no different. Been around government thirty-three years, blessed going in and blessed coming out, okay? And guess what? I ain't been in there thirty-three years and don't know how it works, okay? It's a dirty game, right? And guess what? It's going to be that way until the rational takes place.
Next speaker. Again, we do have two podiums. Feel free to use either one. Begin when you're ready. Pastor Dames.
Good evening. Pastor Richard Dames, P.O. Box nine nine zero, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm the senior pastor of Hope Well Missionary Baptist Church, also president of Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy. On May eighteenth, during a commuting, community meeting, residents and community partners came together to discuss the potential merger, PBSO, at which the residents and partners made it perfectly clear that we do not support this merger. With the proposal from PBSO, I have more questions than I do answer, especially starting with the price tag, which exceeds the price tag of four million dollars. That has the potential to devastate this city financially. Where do those funds come from? I have concerns with the length of this proposal, concerns with our current command staff and officers, just to name a few. We know what we have with Boynton Beach Police Department, but we certainly don't know what we're going to be getting with the PBSO. This proposal, this proposal doesn't say anything and the proposal can't speak for the actions of people. Just as important, I have concerns that this commission is willing to entertain a merger with an institution who has a sheriff who does not have to answer to this city manager or this commission, a sheriff who doesn't even have to answer to Palm Beach County Commission, but a sheriff who only answer to the governor of this state. And yet we're willing to provide an institution, an agency, who for years refused to wear balmers, an agency who refuses to carry Narcan spray, an agency where people of color have been mistreated, mistreated and abused for far too many years. Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose maybe some town hall meetings or forums that this community, along with yourself, can attend and discuss this as two minutes is not sufficient for such a major decision as this merger. This proposal should be null and void, just as the proposal was void of substance. Finally, the family of SJ, pain and grief, along with no justice over the last seven months as it relates to the investigation and no updates at this time. There needs to be a timeline provided to this family so that they can get some much-needed answers. I also hope that this commission understands that each and every one of you were voted by the people, which means you work for the people. So please know that if you're unwilling to hear the voices of the voters who are not in favor of this merger, then we, the voters, will certainly be voting at the next election. then we, the voters, will certainly be voting at the next election.
Is it my turn?
Yes, please begin when you're ready.
Yes, I've been gone all over the world, so I'll remind you, my name is Dr. Blas. I reside at 113 Tara Lakes West, Boynton Beach, Florida, since 1989. The first thing I want to say, I feel like Martin Luther King is present in this room, and the senior pastor who spoke, spoke for him, and I have to totally sympathize with him and agree with him. I see here a beautiful representative, my friend, and I think we will make it right. I want to say that I know there were certain terrible incidents with the Palm Beach, with the Boynton Beach Police Department. I was gone abroad, but I know something terrible happened, a person died. Nevertheless, on the whole, I want to say it very clearly. Our police department is among the best in the world. They really are, now, what happened, I'm not commenting on that, there's probably something terrible happened. But day by day, as these policemen work, they are superb. You may have forgotten, some of you, but in 2012, I was the voice that said, the sheriff's department. I know some of you believe me, I was a loud voice. Why? Because as the senior pastor said, the city must maintain control over our police department. We are a very good city, we can take care of it. If we have some rotten apples, we'll get rid of them, but not, but this is not necessary. Now, I don't know how much time I have left, but there is a broader issue that maybe nobody here knows. I was, let me take a deep breath because I don't want to be angry. I actually was a write-in candidate for mayor. You know, I always run in elections. You will never guess what happened. I came to submit my paperwork at 11:00. The city clerk showed up at 12:30 and told me I was late, and they disqualified me. This is Jim Crow, I am not black, but I'm a brother. This happened, I will testify it under oath. So my name was eliminated from the election. There were many people here who wanted me to run, and I, I'm gonna use a strong language. What happened here was not an election, it was a coup. It was a coup engineered by the sheriff's department to take over this city. I'm going, I'm using strong language, it was, I was not allowed to run, I did file a complaint. It's unbelievable that in America you can be treated out of your right to run. Okay, let me just say one more sentence, very self-serving.
Please wrap it up, sir.
Yeah, just one, one sentence, just deep breath in one sentence. Some of you know me, I'm not one to give up. So I am, in November, I am a write-in candidate to be governor of Florida, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Reedy. I wanted to share with you, my grandmother taught me the meaning of the expression, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Her generation knew some hardships, just as does every generation. She also taught me that what you say and do matters. It wasn't that long ago that Boynton went to the polls and based on your campaign voted for you. The most important of these words were a commitment to listening to the people. Well, here we are, those people are here tonight and they're asking for you to listen to them. Our cops may not be perfect, but they're ours. We value them, and around here, we keep what's ours. We don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We work together to find and fix what's wrong. What you say and do matters. The people heard your words and voted for you. It's time to show them that their voices and votes matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium. Again, we have two of them. You don't have to go on only one side, let's use both of them.
Hi, Ernest McEnol, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm a homeowner, resident, taxpayer here since October of 2020, and I'm a student of Boynton Beach. What do I mean? I'm listening tonight, and I'll make the statement that I think the Palm Beach County Sheriff has major problems, and the Boynton Beach Police have major problems. So my vote is for neither. What, what happens in many states is the state comes in and takes over, and then everybody has to reapply. Because if you look at the connection of this sheriff to this political body in this city, it's very problematic. If you look at the connection of the sheriff to the state attorney and the city attorney in Palm Beach County, Mr. Aronberg, if you look at the connection of Mr. Aronberg to Mr. Crist, who's running for governor in Florida, and his background, and both their backgrounds with these phony marriages that they do before they run for office, they make contracts, they marry women with children, and then they say, oh, vote for me, I'm a family man. As soon as the election's over, they get divorced. Now, Mr. Aronberg is under investigation because the last time he ran and he did that, the woman happened to have been married to a criminal. And now, now they're trying to implicate him. So he goes before everybody knows in the state, and he gets to seal the contract that he made that phony marriage, right? Because, you know, it, it's not gonna be good for him, right? So here we, how much time do I have? Here we stand. So what am I saying here? If you study what's going on in Florida, the bias and hatred coming out of this city politically, and I don't care in Tallahassee, if it's a Republican, an independent, or a Democrat, but the hatred and the bias that comes out of this city, if they don't happen to be your democratic persuasion, and when you look at your connections, just like the judges you're running now, look at the judge out there that you got on the corner. He went to law school with Aronberg up in New York, they all went to Brooklyn Law, they went to Pace University Law. They're all New Jersey, New York, Florida lawyers, and they're ripping this city off. The politics is beyond dirty, and the press is remiss because you refuse to come around. And by the way, secretly, they made the chief full-time, and they made the fire chief full-time, and nobody knows. And now you're trying to run that other cop for the city manager, drooder.
All right, one second, one second. We're gonna move on to the next speaker, I'm gonna ask that, comments from the audience, please calm down. We don't take away from anyone's time, but we must respect all speakers. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, David Wiggins, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, South Palm Beach County Branch. And I stand here in reference to the meeting that Reverend Dames referenced when he spoke three months ago. The mayor and vice mayor were at that meeting, and they were listening to the citizens stating that they did not want and do not want PBSO in Boynton Beach. The reasons why is because Sheriff Bradshaw does not want his officers wearing body cameras. We said that we didn't want them because they would raise the taxes due to the police brutality lawsuits. We said we didn't want them because it would be open season on black and brown folks. And mayor, you got up and you said that you hear us. Vice mayor, you were shaking your head affirmatively in that manner. We said we didn't want them because the Boynton Beach Police leadership was accessible to the citizenry. We said that we didn't want them because we didn't want to have to go to Tallahassee for some form of adjudication. It's time for the city commissioners to listen to the will of the citizenry and say no to PBSO. I also want to address something that was mentioned tonight in the form of a dog whistle. The term law and order is synonymous, and for those of you who do not know, in 1964, Barry Goldwater started the Dog Whistle Campaign, and the dog whistle is a metaphor or figurative language that's not understood by everybody, but those who are in tune with those ideologies of individuals who do not support progressive policies, they blow dog whistles, and the dog whistle tonight was law and order. People, pay attention, people, you got the power.
All right, are there any other, yes? Please approach the podium. If you would like to speak, please form a line so we know that that is your intention. Begin when you're ready, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Ray Wiley, and I'm representing Faith in Florida tonight. Pastor Dames represents the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy, and what I want to share, and I didn't write anything, I, I, I just want to, y'all are really hearing my heart and my passion. When young Stanley Davis was murdered, the community came, came together, and there was an action. Because of the action of the family, community advocates, and the warriors that still fight, we're at a place now where something is gonna happen with this police officer. If this was a sheriff, this would have never happened. They were in a place to influence local police departments. This never happened with the sheriff department. There is always an investigation, and there's a statement made later, historically, from what I understand. There's always a statement made later, we investigated and we did something. You never know what's, what's done. If we go to the sheriff department, it takes so much control away from the citizens that live in Boynton to be able to, to do anything at all, to really speak up for the injustices that they see. That's the, that's the first thing. I was able to look at the proposal, which was 12 pages, and when I saw that, I was just so insulted and embarrassed. If that's proposal, forty-something, forty-three million dollars, and they thought enough of us to only put it on 12 pages. What that says to me, and I'm not the smartest person, but what that says to me is one of two things. They're not serious about coming in, or they already got it in the bag, or they think that they already have it in the bag. Either way, the community needs to go over this proposal. Mayor, you are a mayor and you lead Boynton Beach. I agree with Pastor Dames in having a community meeting where we go over this page one by one, and we get an opportunity to see what's going to happen to Boynton Beach. Finally, I had an opportunity to speak with former city managers of different cities that the sheriff went in. And what I asked them is, would you do it? They all said no. They all said no. I won't say who I spoke with, but I spoke to them, and I said, why not? They said, in a few years, Pastor Wiley, you will not be able to afford it. So I just wanted to share that, plus the community, I haven't heard anybody publicly say that they are supporting this, besides you guys. And I'm sitting back listening, and everyone who I hear say, we do not want the sheriff department in Boynton Beach. Find a way to fix the department that we have, find a way, we could do it. If we're willing to invest forty-something million dollars into changing it, why can't we just invest a small amount to fixing it?
Thank you, Pastor Wiley. Thank you, hello?
I am Kathleen Hawkins, 2760 Northeast 5th Court, Boynton Beach, Florida. I've been a resident of Boynton Beach, how old I am? You ain't gonna know. For fifty-some years, and I'm telling you, all the years that I have been here, this right here is to the point where it's redundant. You know, and came and came here. I lived in this city when it was divided. When I had to go to, as a matter of fact, that little school right there, I couldn't go to Ponce Ana, it was right here by my house. I had to come all the way to this school to go to school. So we not going back. We trust you, and we trust you to the point we put you all in office. So what are you gonna do? I was always told that the proof is in the pudding, what kind is it? What are we gonna do about it? I created a city and I brought before you not just one thing. I brought to you about my area where I live, where I pay my taxes every year, about the lights in my community. They did come out, but they put lights in front, in front of Royal, Rolling Green Elementary. Where I live is pitch black. I can't even walk to the end of my corner, and in that area, the sheriff department holds the opposite side of my street. And Boynton Beach hold this part. So many people have been robbed in that area. So what, what are we gonna do about it? I've called back, I've left messages, and I have never got a response. When it come to PBSO, we do not want them in our city. It's not a win for us. We ain't gonna be able to come down here and talk to you about our issues when it come to police. Is that what you guys gonna do, just throw it all out? That we don't have no say-so in this city, but we pay our taxes here? You want our taxes to pay them, but we have no say-so. Do you live in this city? Do all of you all live in this city? Can you raise your hand if you do? Nobody raised their hand? So this is what I'm trying to say, would you allow this to take place in your city? This is our time. We have came together, we voted you in because we believe everything you said to us. So please, I'm asking you.
Thank you. Begin when you're ready, sir.
All right, you serve ahead. I'm, I'm not gonna spend much time talking about PBSO, it's obvious where the community stands on that. I will say the proposal doesn't look like it was something that was well thought of, doesn't, doesn't look like it's something that they were serious about, so therefore, I think you should just throw it out altogether. But besides that, I just want to say, what is left, though, is the Boynton Beach Police Department. If that's like community saying, let's stay with that. I do know, based on the budget hearings, that the Boynton Beach Police Department is asking for an increase this year in the budget. But there's still some questions remain, of course, rest in peace to Stanley III and, and, and the family, and we, of course, want justice. But also the accountability and transparency part where we're saying, if we're going, community's saying, we want to stay with what we have. But where are the conversations about how community is gonna be a thought partner on what that looks like? How is internal affairs going to be improved as far as when the community is making, is sending in videos or making complaints? What is the process of listening to that, going through that, and getting back to the community in a fair amount of time? What are we doing to improve the type of police officers that are in the community? So there's still a lot of, you know, questions about what we want to go with, and I think there needs to be more attention, intention on paying attention to that, what kind of police officers are gonna be left, how are we gonna improve the processes, how are we gonna make sure there's not another SJ and all the others that were, that were left? I mean, we're hearing conversations even right now about a new dog man, right? Which is what they call the K-9 unit because of the trauma left by people like Mark Shawn. There's a new one that's starting to be, or is aggressive out here. So there's still, even with everything that's been going on, there's still remnants of, of the, not the old regime, but what's currently going on, doesn't seem to be improving. Folks may be thinking that community's just gonna slide off or get quiet and things remain the same, but clear who they want to go with. I'm just trying to make it clear that when we do go with that, we need to know how that's going to be improved, how is it going to be different, and how is community gonna be a part of that? For the youth that's here, how is this police department gonna help our youth, get involved with them? What are they gonna do to, to, to help bridge those? Uh, what are they gonna do to, to, to help bridge those gaps and get our, and, 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 and be, play a bigger role with our youth? Like, and there's a lot of other things, but I just want to put that um, um, out there. Thank you.
Your name for the record?
Erwin Sines.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, yes, my name is Jordan. I am a Boynton Beach resident. Jordan. So I just wanted to talk about the staff. Two hundred and seventy-seven staff members as a package deal is very unsettling. So where does this, where does that leave our current employed? A majority of these staff members will be deputies patrolling our streets, unmonitored, unchecked, without accountability with the leader that possesses an okay corral mentality to shoot first. Answers I cannot obtain from the deceased. If we have forty-two million dollars at our disposal, why not use the proposed plans as a template and fortifying this great city and being just as effective as PBSO, all while maintaining the character of justice, accountability, and transparency? I don't know what the panel's endgame is, but it is not time to be playing Russian roulette with the citizens of Boynton, no matter the color, sexuality, or religious beliefs. And if there is an ounce of bias that is feeling your decision, then you should do what a person of good character would do. Rescue yourself and opt for a referendum.
All right, thank you. Are there any other in-person speakers? Please approach the podium. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Um, Stanley Del Davis. Um, I want to speak on what transpired at the last meeting. Um, obviously, it's very hard for me, being a mother, to compose myself, to maintain my integrity, to come here time after time and speak on my son's behalf. At the last meeting, we were instructed to come here as we are speak, and we will have some type of commissary for you guys to address us at the end, which we did do. So for you to say it was very aggressive, what happened the last meeting? All these people were not here, but the ones that were here, that was very disrespectful. When all we were seeking was an update, an answer, a response, something that you already technically have. So to prolong this and to just study mock us as if we, we're unintelligent, that we don't know what's going on, is false insults us. And it's to the point, I'm so enraged, I can't even get my thoughts out. But for you to call the whole task force for just two people that did not pose a physical threat, that just expressed themselves verbally, that was a tactic for you to cause further division between the community and the Boynton Beach Police. The way that they came and, and conducted themselves, it seems like that was a strategy that you wanted further aggression and a division that we already have with the police department, instead of merging us to be one. What transpired was for us to further divide. And when it comes to this sheriff proposal, I specifically remember when we were first meeting in regards to my son. And one of the things that they were stating was they don't have the budget for our current police department to want to do all the necessary things that they intended to do that were further community safe. So how is it that you guys will have this big budget for the sheriff department? Especially in regards to my son, a lot of the things we asked you for the dash cam. You said you guys don't have the budget to provide all the police with dash cams. How can you not have the necessity budget for what's currently here, but you will have this budget to bring in the sheriff department? These are hidden agendas that you guys brought in. But when you were running, you fabricated and told us lies to get you guys in here, that you were further people, that you were gonna listen, all these things. And now that you guys have been here, there has been nothing. The last meeting, Cruz, you spoke so much about having transparency about fines, but no transparency about a human life.
Thank you. Any other in-person speakers? Anybody else in the audience now is the last call. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we're gonna go to those online. Ma, can you tell us how many digital hands are raised?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have six hands now raised.
All right, money, go ahead and unmute one of them, and please begin when you're ready. We'll let you know in your thirty seconds.
Our first speaker is Ace Tilton Radcliffe. You are self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Hi there. Ace Tilton Radcliffe, PO Box six nine six, Boynton Beach, Florida, three three four three five. Uh, I think that it has obviously been very clear by your constituents here that PBSO is not the answer for Boynton Beach. And that doesn't matter whether we look at the numbers or whether we look at the feelings. The PBSO fiscal year twenty twenty-three enforcement budget by itself comprises a third of the amount raised by taxation. And since the twenty-twelve fiscal year, it's increased by a hundred and fourteen percent, more than double that of county departments supervised by the county commission. And we're talking about the PBSO proposal to take over the Boynton Beach Police Department for forty-two point four million dollars, which is four million dollars more than the thirty-eight million dollars that we already spent. There's sixty years of research that shows that spending more on police doesn't actually prevent crime. It costs a lot of money, it leads to more arrests for low-level nonviolent incidents. It increases the likelihood that people of color, due to unconscious bias, will come in contact with law enforcement. And as we can see from those who are gathered here, what happens when people of color get in touch with our biased police officers? Well, people end up dead. Why don't we spend this money in places where we can actually improve our community? You know, there are statistics out there that say adjusting street lining reduces the outtime, outdoor nighttime index crimes by thirty-six percent. Cleaning up vacant lots can lead to a twenty-nine percent decrease in gun violence. Providing financial assistance that is desperately needed for your constituents right now, who are struggling to pay rent. And we're trying to spend money on a sheriff who won't even find in his grossly overinflated budget the ability to make sure that there are cams on his police officers. This is a man who won't even make sure that there is Narcon on his police officers in order to prevent people from dying, because he does not believe that people who use drugs deserve to be safe. This is absolutely a broken concept from start to finish. And I desperately hope that y'all are listening to everybody who is gathered in here today, because PBSO is not the right way to go. You guys need to be looking out for Boynton Beach, and you need to be doing it in a better way than the way that is currently planned in that twelve-page packet that's trying to blow us all off. Thank you.
Thank you. Money, let's go to the next person.
Our next speaker is Sharda Hunter. Sharda, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, please begin.
Okay, yeah, Sharda, um, Las Vegas, Nevada. Um, I just want to quote Lori, the former city manager, and um say, stop with the dramatics, okay? You know, you sitting up there talking about you felt threatened, and your family felt threatened. Uh, blame that on Ty, how he conducted himself. He calls that uproar, uproar like that. By sitting up, you don't want to be called names? If you're not a coward and a liar, then what the hell do you call that? Because you sat there and had my sister sitting there seeking answers, and you told them that you were gonna give that to them, then you scared off like a little coward. And that's why, so, so you're a coward, you're a liar, and you're an instigator. You caused that to happen, then you want to call the police? These people come up there every single week. When have you felt threatened? Now you felt these three people gonna threaten you? Get the, let me tell you something. No one has promised you no civility. You, your anxiety, y'all anxiety levels need to be on level ten each and every time you come up there, and you disrespecting my sister, treating her like she's a last, like she's, like she's an afterthought. Treat my nephew's case like it's an afterthought. You need to have some anxiety. You do not need to feel comfortable sitting up there. You want to feel comfortable? No, that's not gonna happen, because people are tired, and I'm tired. We're all tired. This is what, and that, and that is what you saw that day. People, you treat them like, my sister's a whole, a whole reddish to nurse. You think she has time, time to be getting police called upon her? And what if she had gotten arrested? Conduct yourself with some integrity, and then people will act accordingly. You're the professional here. This is your realm. You act accordingly. They're human. Yes, they have their emotions. Don't, don't sit there and make it seem like they need to control their emotions. They are hurt. Did your family members get chased down by, by a police officer and laying in the middle of the street dead? Your family members felt threatened? Good. Are they alive? Are you, did your family members get to go home and lay down in their beds? Yeah, okay, threatened. Yeah, that's very cute. My nephew is dead, all right, and y'all still get to live. Stop treating my sister like she's an afterthought. You're gonna be feeling uncomfortable each and every time you come up in there.
Thirty seconds. All right, sounded like that was the end. Thank you. Uh, money, let's move on to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Corla McGuire.
All right.
Corla, you've been unmuted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, this is Corla McGuire, five oh six Whispering Pines. I want to thank um the mayor, commissioners, and manager for um their patience and thoughtful thinking on this matter. Um, the impetus of this matter is SJ, clearly. Um, and I'm speaking specifically on just say no to the PBSO. And I'm a fervent believer that we need to say no to this um losing proposal, as are many of my constituents and neighbors and friends and family, et cetera. Um, it's obvious that this was what brought this to light. So with SJ, we need to, and I, I'm aware that you had a behind closed door meeting. I'm assuming it's based on what uh the SJ issue. You need to make proper decisions, imprison someone basically on this matter uh quickly, uh and not give up the control of our own city. I'd like to express my view and the view of many. Firstly, giving up control of policing our city is a lose-lose situation. We inherit the sheriff's out-of-control pension program, uh which is in need of funding, which we would provide, not to mention a less commendable brand, Narcon. Uh, they don't do, um, if people are dying, they don't, you know, try to resuscitate them. I'm not exactly sure of the verbiage on that. Uh, they're not who we want to align ourselves are as a community, in my opinion. Furthermore, we are saying that we can't manage ourselves, so we're not who we are. Uh, we have a fresh board with a lot of great initiatives. And I challenge this board and new city commissioner, excuse me, manager, to find somebody um that can fill this void, uh that has the leadership abilities that we're looking for. Nobody wants a loser. And by giving up to the county, we're saying we lost, and we're living in our mother's basement, essentially. Um, giving up control of our force to the county is a loss for everyone. And since the sheriff's plan is asking for an increase of first-year funding that will continue over time, not to mention the proposal is garbage, and I say you drop it tonight. That's what I really challenge you for. Drop it tonight. Show who you are. Um, and I believe that this is what the community has clearly been voicing. Lastly, um, if the board and existing force is overwhelmingly in favor of this move, which doesn't seem like they should be, you have to put it to a vote to the community. And I want to thank Commissioner Hay for his forward-thinking and early opposition on this matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, money, can you remind us how many more speakers are online, so we keep track of it?
We have three more to go.
All right, go ahead and unmute the next speaker.
Okay, our next speaker is Ramona Young. Ramona, you've been unmuted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Ramona Young, one zero one South Federal Highway. I intended to be there, but there was a conflict. Um, I have heard everyone speaking, and many things have been said that I certainly agree with. Um, I just want to bring a different perspective on the police and this PBSO. Definitely not for PBSO coming into Boynton Beach. There is a state-of-the-art facility at High Ridge Road. People are processed in an organized procedural manner. I've been to, had the tour at the P, at the Boynton Beach Police Department. There are quality office for workspace within the department. There is a full gym. In that gym is where there should be a space to deprogram the days or nights events. There should be a talk therapist available twenty-four seven. Someone is always in need of debriefing of an event. Police officers don't want to take their work home on a regular basis or just suck it up. If they can drop it at a, if they can drop it at a door to be heard, we have a better officer to report to duty on his or her next shift. I realize I am being idealistic, and if I don't plant a seed of consideration, we may continue to have poor relationships within our workforce and community. People should be respected at all times. We all have biases and need to recognize within ourselves and work actively to do better. We must learn to do better. Sometimes people are disrespectful to police officers, and that must change. Sometimes police officers are disrespectful to citizens, and that must change. Only you, as an individual, can temper down any negative situation. There should be a requirement that new hires live in Boynton within six months to a year. It will give the new hire a vested interest in the community, and the neighbors will get to feel safer knowing an officer is living on their street or their block or in their development.
Thirty seconds.
Officers must get out of their vehicle and get to know their area of patrol. Let the neighbors know that an officer or officers will be visiting their street to introduce themselves and to, and you to get to know them. If uh I recognize you, it's less likely that I will fear you, and you fear, will fear me. Let's bring back some respect on both sides. Finally, as I said, I see no reason to bring PBSO to Boynton. It shows disrespect to those who are here and says to them that you have no confidence in them. We will also be paying for very expensive offices that house the sheriff's office, while a new state-of-the-art building is being remodeled and west.
Time has expired. Thank you so much for your thoughts. Uh, you have been heard, and we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Money, please unmute the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Kenya Freeland. Kenya, you've been unmuted. Please click the microphone next to your name.
Kenya, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I think each and every person has a valid point. Um, and, and I do agree, as a community, for outsiders to dictate what goes on in all of our lives, it's such a big decision that um I think a vote, in my personal opinion, is a vote is the only way that everyone can come together and agree what the vast majority of people want. You know, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion. Another thing is, what nobody's talking about is how much do we pay out a year in frivolous lawsuits? The numbers I can find are anywhere from fifteen to twenty million dollars that Boynton pays out, you know, from not being trained properly and making mistakes, which we all pay for, which is why you have eighty thousand people that can't come to the meeting, because they're in fear of their life, you know? So I think everyone's voice need to be heard. Um, Boynton has been looking into the Sheriff Department since before Gregory, the other police chief, who was a pervert or child molester. They started looking at it back then. So we've always had internal problems. Um, but I think the only way to get people to come together as a whole, because everybody should have a voice, is like the Reverend said, to God be the glory, let's have a vote, maybe, if that's even possible, um, because it is such a drastic decision, you know? A lot of people that voiced their opinion live in really nice neighborhoods. And they say, oh, we don't have a problem, but, and I can tell you, like, I call the police once a week, and they don't even show up. So I don't know how much worse it gets than that. Um, so another thing is, we don't need the fireman as a city manager. I think that's a fatal mistake. We're losing trust in every agency because of him. He wants to go spend, if there's forty million dollars, he wants twenty million dollars with the fire trucks. I mean, come on. So we need to gain everyone's trust again. We need to listen to the people. I also think you- I also think you should add one dollar to every household in the, in the, in the whole city. So that goes towards every commissioner. Let's increase or double their pay so that they can put their heart and soul and live their job rather than it be a part-time job. So I hope you guys can think about that and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Um, let's move on to the next speaker.
Okay, our final speaker is Kingsley Ratcliffe. Kingsley, you've been unmuted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Good evening, Kingsley Ratcliffe, 717 Shore Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. I would like to put my voice out into the fray and also say no to PBSO. So many other people have very clearly voiced their thoughts on this, but to have PBSO in Boynton Beach is just inviting further police brutality. Your constituents have made it very clear what they want, and it is not PBSO. I would now like to pivot towards another problem, which is affordable housing and low-income housing. As a longtime born and raised Boynton Beach resident, I'm currently being priced out of my hometown. I cannot afford a studio to rent here. An average is around one point six to two K a month for a studio. Using the 2020 census uh information, the average yearly salary of a Boynton Beach resident is, let's see, it is just over twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is roughly fourteen point sixty-five uh hourly. And if we're going to be generous and say that the studio is one point six K, that would be nineteen thousand dollars a year. Nineteen thousand dollars of a twenty-nine thousand dollar yearly take-home is over sixty-five percent of somebody's yearly income. That's not livable. I want to live next to my family. I want to be around my friends and the people that I love. I cannot do this and I need help from my city. In fact, I have to work out of city in order to afford to live where I am now and it's pushing it. Thank you. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. If we give four million extra dollars to PBSO, that could be used for so many other things. Community outreach and parks and public access and libraries, anything but police brutality. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Money, just want to confirm that that indeed was the last speaker.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that ends it for public comments. Thank you, everybody. We're now going to move on to the next section of the agenda. Now, we did have an amendment to the agenda to have a discussion on PBSO. Request of Commissioner Hay right after public audience. So Commissioner Hay, since you asked for it, I'd like for you to, I'll give you the mic to open it up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've listened here to about twenty-five people tonight and not one of them has mentioned anything about keeping PBSO. We've heard many audiences over the past few months, weeks. I've received many emails, calls and public interest uh of saying that this is a big mistake. As you heard tonight, it's been said that it's going to take uh forty-two million dollars versus the thirty-eight million we have in the budget. We wonder where that million is going to come from. There's no real advantage, as I read and I'm sure that my colleagues have read for themselves. There's no real advantage that I see uh in the PBSO document that was some twelve pages long. And two thousand and twelve, we turned them down. At that time, I was the mayor of the city of Boynton Beach. And in ten years, it seems to me that they just changed a few figures here and there and the document is the same. This document, to me, has no substance. No body cams. To me, that is a showstopper. With all of the different people, like I think it was uh Ray Whitley or someone who said, I've also talked with uh commissioners and mayors of various cities. And they all say the same thing as far as having the PBSO. Most of them wish that they could go back. But once you cross that line, you cannot uh go back. I think the problems that we have today with our police department, we can fix them. Uh, we do have a new chief now, uh Chief DeGiulio. And he's making some very positive change. There's no doubt that if we work together as a community and as citizens, we can resolve the issues that we have. You will not have that with the PBSO. There are a lot of problems uh that are not being addressed. Let's say, so I'm, you know, this document, as far as I'm concerned, and the PBSO is null and void. I really uh don't want to spend any more time or money uh with this PBSO activity. As, as it has been pointed out, we've got forty-two million dollars, uh thirty-eight million dollars uh in the budget. We can spend those dollars, especially that extra four million, on resolving the issues that we have in our great city. I, I heard one speaker say that we do need to drop this. And basically, my Christian friend, uh, I'm, I'm a preacher, okay? It comes out every nine days. But uh basically, the citizens of uh Boynton Beach, um, I hear you. And I've heard enough. I don't want to spend any more or waste any more time or money on a particular item of the PBSO. So I'm ready to uh make a motion that we stop all negotiation once for all with PBSO. That is my motion. I put that in the form of a motion.
All right. Per Roberts rules, we do have a motion before us. The motion, as Commissioner Hay has said, is to cease discussions or negotiations with PBSO. In order for this to move forward, we need a second. So at this point, I'm going to ask, is there a second for this motion? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask again. I'm going to call one more time. Is there a second to automatically cease all discussions with PBSO at this point? Commissioner Hay, I am not hearing a second and the motion fails for the lack of a second. Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen?
I'd like to have a discussion.
We will have a discussion.
That's, that's, that's why I don't want to make a second because I want to have some dialogue.
Absolutely.
On this, because Commissioner Hay.
Uh, that, that will come up in discussion. You know, that, that's what a discussion is all about. And then you either vote it up or you vote it down.
Yes, so.
That's part of our procedure.
Here, here's, here's the deal. If you wanted to have a discussion, um, a second is not to agree to the motion.
Right.
A second is just to open the floor for continuing the discussion.
Right.
All right, so Commissioner Turkin, how would you like?
Discussion, I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. All right.
Now, you, you had a discussion.
So this is a hot topic and this is something that I requested because my number one concern is public safety. I got twenty-four tallies, I'm sorry, twenty, nineteen, twenty tallies to keep the police department, two for referendum for the people to vote and zero from PBSO for tonight. I've had emails for both. I've spoken with the sheriff, spoken with Cor, not the sheriff, but Colonel Rahoe. I spoke with Joe DeGiulio and I plan to continue that conversation. I've said publicly that this has to make sense financially. And as of right now, I, I don't know if it does. I don't know if we can get that price tag down. I think the resources are better. The training, I think, is better. But again, it's got to make sense and it's, it's got, it's got to be the will of the people. And so, right, so another thing is body cams. I don't know if the sheriff's office would be willing to take those with them if they merge. I don't know. Another concern is Narcan. Then there's the argument that's the, you know, paramedics concerned to carry that. But again, that's, that is an important issue that needs to be addressed. But I think regardless, if we go to PBSO or we keep Boynton Beach Police Department, something needs to change. I think the climate has cooled down within the PD after speaking to some officers. Chief DeGiulio, you're doing some great work. I'd like to, I like, I'd like to have you come up and hear what you've done and accomplished in a few months.
Again.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner, please.
I'm sorry.
You know, I, I just, my, my initial concern is I have gunshots in front of my house. You know, I don't hear about anything for three months. And I don't think that's necessarily anyone's fault. I think that's, I think that's from previous failed leadership. And if we have new leadership, maybe we can get this department in the right direction. But I don't think a thirty-eight million dollar budget is going to be enough because my concern is that what if our officers go? What are we doing to retain these officers? Are we giving them raises? Are we, are we focusing on their mental health? What, what are we doing to help them do their job? And so, you know, I don't want Boynton Beach to be a turn-and-burn police department. I, someone mentioned about having the officers live here. I think that's important with most city staff, um, is to be near or in the community. I think that getting officers vested in this department is important. And that's what will lead to successful policing. The question is, can we do that? Are we in a point where we can repair and get this department to where it used to be? If the answer is no, then we need to look at other options. If the, if the answer is yes, we can, then we need to figure out how.
Ladies and gentlemen, all right. Commissioner Turkin, were you finished or did you want to add anything else?
No, this is a, this is a difficult decision. I think, again, there's a lot of details that need, that I need from both the police department and also the sheriff's office to see if they'd be willing to do body cams or Narcan. You know, and so, you know, I'm, I'm undecided at this point, but um it sounds like the people have spoken. And, and uh, you know, I just would ask, if we do not go to the sheriff's office, I'm going to hold everyone accountable that we helped these officers. I'm going to hold everyone accountable that we give more, more, more in their budget. You know, because if we don't, I'm, 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 I'm going to ask about it every single, every single meeting. What are we doing to get better? If we're going to be a full-service city, we got, we, we got, we got to be the best. We got to be the best.
Mayor, Bradshaw has already stated he's not going with the, with the body cams. He stated that. So the, I mean, you could, you can ask for more.
Commissioner Hay, one second.
Okay.
I, I don't want us to do business with people yelling in the back. It's extremely distracting, all right? We didn't interrupt anybody when they were speaking and I want to make sure that we also do the same thing for the other members here. So Commissioner Hay, please begin again.
All I'm saying is that Bradshaw has already stated that he's not going to go with the body cams. So that's, that's an issue that's off the table, according to his words. Okay, so uh to me, that's a show, showstopper because we're people getting hurt, okay? And there's nothing to back up uh what really happened, other than having the body cam or even the camera in the car. We got to have those in order to stop what we've seen over the years. We're talking about a change here, my, my, my colleagues, that's going to affect us for decades and decades and decades to come, okay? And we've got to get this right. The, 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 the uh situation that we have with our current police department, they are fixable. We can fix them, okay? We've got police officers on first-name basis. We've got them walking the streets. We got them out there with the Boynton Beach Rams. We got them all over the city talking to people. Let's don't go back. When I get ready to, uh, if I'm having an event over at uh Sarah Sims Park, I can get on the phone and call the chief and say, hey, I need two more officers over here. The crowd is, is getting a little large, you know, and I don't want things to get out of order. And they're there. You think I'm going to be able to do that with Bradshaw? No, okay? And, and that's important for our city, not just for District Two, okay? But it's for our entire city. And this is going to be the legacy of us who are sitting up here right now, okay? When, when you and I are out of office, okay? This is still going to affect this city and they're going to, the city is going to be looking at us as where were you? What were you thinking? And I don't want to have that as my legacy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Any questions? Vice Mayor, did you want to say anything? That's all right. All right, um, you know, I'll say this. I have heard all of you tonight. I have heard you in the community meetings. And if you've spoken to me, what I've told you is I'm going to give this a fair shot. And the reality is, we all saw that proposal and there was hardly enough information in me on that. So basing my decision on about PBSO, if I haven't seen the facts, all I'm asking for, hold on a second, that wasn't the full story and we can see that because that was twelve pages, not enough information. All right, I have drawn the line on the sand when it comes to, I've said this on the news, so it's out there already, when it comes to body cameras, I want more accountability. I want dash cam, I want body cameras. So I agree with you on that, Commissioner Hay. I just see no harm in hearing them out. So if it's good for us, it's good for us. If it's not good for us, it's not good for us. But what are we afraid of? Can we at least hear it out? I want to know what some of these things really are going to, how they're really going to go down. Will there be body cameras? Will there not be? We need to ask them those questions. And I know that staff is in the process of gathering more information and I want to see that information. And again, we're going to let the public see it. We're going to let the public weigh on it. We're going to hear the public, at least get all the facts. I have promised people that I will make my decisions only on facts and I will leave it there. Until such time, I'm not comfortable making any decision either way. And that's where I leave it there, all right? All right. Anything else from my colleagues? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second. And again, the motion wants to cessation of all discussions with PBSO and in fact finding anything like that. Is that correct, Commissioner Hay? Did I get your motion correctly?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the motion, say no. Say no.
No.
Okay, uh, the motion does not move forward. All right. All right. Um, you want to go through a roll-call vote? That's perfectly fine with me. Um, city clerk, please go down, please go down the dais.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chris. With what we received, I don't feel like it's enough information for us to make such a large decision. I think that I was.
All right, again, one second, Vice Mayor, all right? One second, one second. Let, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I was expecting more of a contract that I was going to thoroughly read and take hours to go through. That's not what we received, so I don't feel like with the information that we received, it's. with the information that we received, it's adequate for me to make any decision whatsoever. So I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight on this and.
Okay, well, we need a yes or a no to the motion. The motion being to cease all discussions with PBSO. All right, City Clerk, let's proceed with the others, and we'll circle back with Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Turkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Mayor Penzerga?
The answer is no. I want to hear all the facts. All right, I've asked you several times not to burst out. All right, officer, I'm gonna ask you to please remove that person. I have asked numerous times, and I gave you warnings. All right, we're gonna go back to Vice Mayor.
I think we definitely need more information to make any determinations, and if we can't continue asking questions, then we can't really get anywhere. So I say we continue asking questions. It doesn't mean I'm supporting this or not supporting this. It simply means we need more information.
You need to say yes or no to the motion.
No.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Yes. Okay. It failed. Yes, it failed four to one. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have concluded. We have concluded this item. And now we're gonna move on to the administrative section of the agenda. And the first item is 5A. It says Mr. Michael Wilson is term limited as a board member in the Historic Resources Preservation Board, and has requested that the city commission consider his reappointment. Is there, from the city clerk or the city manager on this item? Uh, City Clerk?
I do not have any information on this.
All right. As for me, I, I have no problem. To my understanding, there are no other applicants that he's competing with. And so if he wants to continue to serve, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Want that in a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that Mr. Michael Wilson continues to serve.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of repointing Mr. Michael Wilson back onto the Historic Resources Preservation Board, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. Item 5B, appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory board. So let me pull up the list. In Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we do have an opening, but we do not have an applicant. Education and Youth Advisory Board, we have an applicant, Pedro Macedo de Lima Quinto. That is for Vice Mayor Cruz, which.
I'll go ahead and nominate Pedro, what is it? Pedro. Macedo de Lima Quinto.
Right, the last, the name's very long, but I heard a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes. Congratulations. Historic Resources Preservation Board, there are no applicants, but we do have openings, a regular position and an alternate. In the Library Board, Commissioner Hay, this is your appointment, and we have Margaret Newton as the only applicant.
I'll be very honored to appoint Margaret Newton to the Library Board.
All right. And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, who's second, the motion?
Uh, Commissioner Kelly over there. Uh, moving on to Planning and Development Board, we have one position open. It's a regular position, also Commissioner Hay. And the applicant is William Harper.
Motion to.
All right, for Mr. Harper, and we have a second from Commissioner Turkin. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Harper. Moving on to the Senior Advisory Board, it is my nomination for a regular position. The applicant is Christina Charles. I'd like to make a nomination for Christina Charles.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Charles. Administrative section of the agenda, we're now moving on to Consent Agenda. Are there any items here that my colleagues would like to pull for discussion? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. We have a motion. And we have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes for Consent Agenda. Moving on to Consent Bids and Purchases, over $100,000. Are there any items my colleagues would like to pull? All right, seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
To approve.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on. There's no public hearing. There's no city manager report, no unfinished business, or we've concluded that item. Now we're moving on to new business. It is proposed resolution number R22-106. Approve an interlocal agreement with the town of Hypoluxo for a septic-to-sewer project. It's a conversion project to eliminate the use of septic tanks in the town's commercial area west of the FEC Railroad. City Manager, did you want to add any additional information?
I have the Public Works, I'm sorry, the Utilities Director here that is available to answer any questions you all may have. But this is a infrastructure project for them. It is contributing to environmental, positive environmental impact in the area and helping us with water quality and those things for our jurisdiction that we provide water and sewer to.
All right, Dr. Calcutta, thank you. If you could just give us a brief overview of the item before we proceed.
So, I'm Calcutta, Utilities Director for City of Boynton Beach. This is an interlocal agreement, like the city manager said, with a town of Hypoluxo. We have pretty much converted most of the sewer to, from septic to sewer, which just means that there are no septic tanks in that area. Town of Hypoluxo applied for some grants and got some grant money to get this project done, and we are working in collaboration. So all the monies are going to be coming from those grants, and we are going to be administering the project management part of it, construction, all the details, designs, all of those are City of Boynton Beach, Beach's responsibility. The Town of Hypoluxo Commission approved this, council approved this last month, and we are bringing it to our commission for approval. And I can answer questions, or if I have a brief presentation prepared, if you want us to go through that, we can go through that too.
Let's hear from my colleagues. Would you like to see the presentation, or do you want to directly go to your questions?
I'd like to see the presentation.
All right, Commissioner Turkin, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask Charles or Manny to put the presentation on? It is?
It's on.
Okay, thank you. So can we move to the next slide, please? So that, we are at that slide. Thank you. So this, the first slide just gives a view of what were the grants that Town of Hypoluxo got from Florida DEP, Resilient Florida Grant, as well as a state senate allocation for total grant funding of 1.39 million. And we are the utility provider for most of Town of Hypoluxo, as well as providing sewer services. And this will be the last portion of Town of Hypoluxo that has some commercial areas that, that are still under septic, that this is going to convert. And the interlocal agreement just provides the framework for the city and the town for implementing. Can we move, move to the next slide, please? The next two slides give you an overview of the map of where this is gonna happen and what is going to be taking place. So one is an area called Hypoluxo Mall. The green arrows and are showing gravity sewer, and the red arrows are showing force mains. And in between those is a little, a small lift station that's going to be made. So we are going to be connecting to our force main, City of Boynton Beach Force Main. So there will be those pipes that are going to be laid out and a lift station that's going to be put out. So it's proposed gravity sewer collection system, as well as proposed lift station and proposed sewer force main, and that's going to get connected to an existing force main. Next slide, please. This area is near Minor Road and the business park, and we've pulled that area out because it's hard to really lay it out in that small inset. Again, the green arrows are proposed gravity sewer collection system. There's a lift, proposed lift station in between that area, and then there is a proposed sewer force main that's going to get connected to the existing force main. Next slide, please. The interlocal agreement lays out that the city will assess the town with design, construction management, project management to satisfy the grant requirements, all the grant part of it, and whatever they need to submit is going to be done by Town of Hypoluxo. We are planning to utilize design, build, procurement, progressive design, build, procurement, so that we can move this project fast and fast-track it. The town will fund the entire project and reimburse for the actual cost. That includes our services, design and construction, add to the city's utility fund. And when it's completed, all of those assets will be turned over to the utilities, so it'll be part of city utilities sewer system. And the prop, all the properties will be built according to our rates. Next slide, please. The project timeline, we, this is July 20th, 2022, when the Town of Hypoluxo approved the interlocal agreement. We're bringing it to our commissioners today, August 2nd. The design and construction is to be completed by September 30th, 2024, and the estimated project cost is 1.45 million. And I can answer any questions.
So Dr. Calcutta, you know, I, I appreciate that they've come to us to help them with their project. And ultimately, it's good for the environment. We're helping them to remove their septic tanks and convert them into sewer. My question is, what is the scope of our work? What exactly will be, will we be doing for them?
So we are not removing their septic tanks. They're going to do that themselves. What we are doing is providing them design, construction management, and construction oversight for the project itself of laying out those gravity sewer lines, lift station, and the force main connections to our existing mains. So that will be our job to put the bids out, to get the right contractor on board, right consultants on board for design and construction. That's why we're going with the progressive design build, so we can move the project faster, and it can be one firm that can do it.
And we have the capacity and staff to manage this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's all options for now. Any questions from my colleagues on the presentation? Okay, seeing none, that was quick. Thank you, and painless. Seeing none, may have a motion, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong item. May have a motion to approve Resolution Number R22-106. We have a motion, I don't know who was first.
It doesn't matter.
For the city clerk, it matters. Let's just go with Commissioner Hay and the second, Vice Mayor Cruz. All those say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. This brings us to the newly added agenda item 11B. This was my request to have a discussion about possibly hiring another pair of eyes, if you will, an outside independent law firm to serve as co-counsel on all matters pertaining to Town Square. I think, and I know that litigation is under closed, closed door, and I'm not gonna reveal those details in public now. But as we prepare for the next chapter, I think it's really important for us to have exactly that. A fresh pair of eyes that can look at this independently, and they can help usher in the next chapter of Town Square. Is that something that my colleagues would be comfortable with? And just to provide a little bit more information, well, first of all, let's just hear if my colleagues are even interested in that. Commissioner Hay?
Well, my, my question would be, why do you feel we need another set of eyes? Is, are you saying that we don't have enough confidence in our current legal department?
I think that there is a lot of history with Town Square. And it's not that I don't have confidence in our legal department, because our legal department isn't one person. It's several individuals that played a role in the development of Town Square. But if, here's my analogy, Commissioner Hay. You know, if we have a medical problem, we have a general practitioner, right? We have a general doctor. But I think it's really important that if we're gonna do something that's in the order of a quarter billion dollars or more, we need to hire a specialist, someone who devotes their work on defense, someone who's entirely focused on this, that brings a breadth of experience. I don't see how that could hurt us. I think it could help us. And the important thing here is that moving forward with Town Square is so important. And, you know, in terms of significance and monetary value, that it's always good for us to bring in specialists, again, to serve as another pair of eyes, to make sure that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. So that's where I'm coming from, and I want to make sure we bring in as many guardrails to ensure the success. It is our job to fix Town Square, and I think this would be a prudent direction for us to go in.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I hear what you're saying, and, but for the same reason that we just discussed with the PBSO, I don't have enough information. How much is this gonna cost us? Can we afford it? How long is it gonna be for? Are we looking for a permanent set of eyes on every project? Those are the types of questions that I want to have and before I can vote on.
Absolutely, and I agree with you. So what I am asking for today is just a general consensus of where my colleagues are. If this is something that you even want to entertain. So I'm not asking for final decisions today. If we are even open to it, then I can make a recommendation. But ultimately, city staff has to provide us with that information. So I'm not asking for final decisions today. Vice Mayor Cruz, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, well, obviously, we know there were definitely mistakes made during the Town Square negotiations, and some things were overlooked. The only concern, as you're mentioning right now, is it appears that the attorney that's kind of handling the situation may have been appointed by the attorney that was handling that. So that's the only thing that, a bit of a conflict. But if that's something, that's something that I'm open to having a discussion about. We definitely need more information on what the details are on that, but I'm open to having that discussion.
Okay. My colleagues, Commissioner Turkin first?
Just, just so I understand, we're hiring this outside counsel to assist? Because this is, this is kind of tough, because we can't talk about what was discussed in the closed-door session. And so, don't worry, Commissioner Hay, I'm not gonna say it. And so, for me, is, is, is this to move forward, or is this to look into how we got here? Because if it's how we got here, I would love, I would love to dig deep. I would love to dig deep and see how we got in this mess. Because there is a lot of stuff revealed that I'm a little bit concerned about. And so if that's the case, great, but to move forward with this, and again, it's tough because we can't, you know, is, do we, do we need that right now? I'm not, I'm not opposed to a further discussion. I don't feel comfortable making a decision on that right now. Because of the sensitive information. Once that, yeah, I, I, I don't know how it works, I guess, is my question. So at what point can we start discussing, this is for Lee, you start discussing what's, what those conversations are behind closed doors, so we can make a decision on this, because that's kind of important for me.
Sure, sure. I think at this point in time, the discussion should remain behind the closed doors, because there's still discussions and negotiations going on, and you don't want to make statements that may influence those decisions going forward. You know, it's, it's not private information that Mr. Baird, who, who was here earlier, is, is also working on that matter. So it's, it's not just, you know, our office working on that case. So it's. you know, our office working on that case. So it's already an independent person looking at, looking, working on that matter. So I just, you guys can decide, you know, to do something else. Obviously, it's your discretion. But I just wanted to point that out.
So we, we will have our legal team, Mr. Baird, and an additional attorney moving forward.
So my intention for now is, again, just to gauge consensus. We need more information, of course, about getting a co-counsel to deal with all legal matters pertaining to Town Square. So it's not a city attorney replacement, it is another pair of ayes specifically to deal with Town Square. And for now, I'm recommending that it is a co-counsel position, because, you know, somebody has, Mr. Baird knows the background information, so they need to be able to exchange information. So right now, my request is only for co-counsel status.
Okay.
And, and if you want them to look into the past, I think that would be excellent.
Okay.
You know, my initial thought was for moving forward, because it's so important. I don't want to mess it up, and I want to arm us with additional pair of ayes that specialize in this. But I agree with you.
Yeah, no, okay, I understand. Thank you for clarifying that, and thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would be open to that, especially to dig deep in how we got to this point. You know, we gotta look at the costs and everything, so I, I could support that.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have any comments or questions, or?
I, a very brief comment. I agree with you, Mayor, that I think that going forward, although the, our city attorney and staff are equipped in many different areas, sometimes when it comes to complex contracts or agreements, a special, a specialized attorney is helpful. I think of it, and I mean, I'm in that line of work, so to speak, and you wouldn't ask a personal injury attorney to help you on a real estate matter. So I think that to look into having someone to just be our extra set of ayes going forward on, on, and it, and on specific not every project, not anything that's going to be a long-term thing, but something that we, we want an extra set of ayes on this to make sure that we are, and the residents of the city are protected from anything.
Absolutely.
From any, for the unforeseen, the things that we wouldn't know as laypersons and the residents wouldn't know. But then an attorney who focuses and, and specializes in that line of work would pick up on quickly and can explain it to us. And I think that key in, in moving forward is also having somebody who can explain the process and explain what things mean and explain what our options are. And so I don't see any disadvantage to looking into the possibility of having a co-counsel to be our, to be an extra set of ayes to just cross the Ts and dot the Is and make sure that we're not missing something on these important projects and things that are coming up. So that's, I agree.
All right, sounds good. City Attorney, or Assistant City Attorney?
I just want to just, you know, under the Florida bar, there, there are no specialists for certain contract specialists. There's local government and county government specialists, but there's no specific specialty. So I just want to make sure that the, the, the discussion lent to, there is a, there is attorneys out there who just specialize in, in this type of thing. It's not really how the Florida bar works. I can say that, you know, you all have the, to, to, to hire someone to do as you're suggesting tonight, but it, it won't be anyone with more specialty or more knowledge than the people who are already working. They'd just be different.
Thank you for that input, and I think ultimately, that will be our decision to make.
Of course.
We will assess that as a, as a body and will make that decision.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, the Florida, the Florida bar,
Understood.
We, we're not able to put ourselves out as specialists in certain things, so.
Right, but there are some attorneys that focus their work for decades on, you know, on a certain type of law versus a different type of law.
There are some people who do injury work.
That do, yeah.
Of course.
Who will have the ultimate decision? And you have two legal bodies looking at the same thing. And if they disagree, what, what, what do you go with the extra eye, or we go with our legal, or what?
No, we, we make the decision. We just get more input. We need, it's another pair of ayes for another set of advice to double check. That's it. We still make the decision. That doesn't change. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Mayor, because we can't screw up Town Square again. You know, we have to be mindful, and we have to be tactful, and we have to make sure that we have set of ayes that are, as Commissioner Kelly mentioned, experts that understand things that we, as laypeople, don't understand. We're not attorneys. So I think this is in order to protect the residents of Boynton Beach, and we're just doing our due diligence, as we should, as is our duty.
I, I just, you know, we talk about protecting the citizens of Boynton Beach, which I go along with. But you heard the citizens tonight. And they, they are telling us what they want, and we, we're not protecting them on that issue. But it seems like another layer of governments, a layer that we don't need. We all know why we're, we're, there were some things not done.
Actually, no, we don't know the full story. That's why I'm asking.
Based on what we learned today, which nobody knew about, and I can't talk about it, but there's a lot. There, there's, there, there is a lot.
It's water over the dam, really. I mean, I, if we, going forward, maybe.
We can't move forward if we don't know, we have to learn from our mistakes.
If you don't know your history, how do you know you're not going to repeat it, right?
I'm definitely not going to repeat, well, I won't, I won't say that, but anyway, okay, I, I'll go along with the discussion about it, to bring back more information, so we can make a, a decision on it. Tonight, you're just trying to find out if we are willing to go move in that direction.
Precisely. It's not a final decision. It's not like that, so.
Having said that, I'll go along with it.
Thank you. All right. That is the last of new business. I just want to confirm. No, this is not public comments, public. We are not making a final decision yet. This was just getting a general direction. We're going to come back to it. Okay? All right. So I see there's nothing under legal, and that concludes the agenda for this evening.
Mayor?
Yes, Andrew Mack, I heard you first, Mr. Mack?
I'd just like to get some clarification, if you might. There's a couple items that are on the future agenda. I just want to make sure that we get the information for you. I know that they were repeated tonight. So I want to make sure. So one item is the Dog Park conceptual, I think we're talking about JC Park, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I wanted to get an update, because last commission meeting, I asked.
Go again, man, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're good. I asked city manager to request adding, or what it looks like to add the park in Leisureville and the, the proposed dog park into the budget and get those conceptuals. I know we had one that was in-house. Love it. What, what are those next steps? Where are we at with those next steps? You know, I just want to make sure that we stay on top of those items.
And, and that's my question, is that the direction that I heard was that we bring that back to you, and it would be in the budget discussion in September, that that would be added to that.
Included in the budget.
That would be included.
That was the direction.
So then you guys would need to apply.
If you wanted another way, just let me know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence to make sure it's in that budget.
Okay.
And the, the other thing I like to look at too, and I forgot to mention this earlier, is there's a, there's some land, I think it's Meadows Boulevard in District Four, maybe. There is some land that the city owns, looking into that to be a passive park or utilizing that for a park. I would like to look at that as well. I don't know if we, you know, obviously, the budget's tight. I, I would like staff or city manager to look at that as well.
I, I would ask that the commission of that district to, to help in telling me what their desire is. I understand what your desire is. I understand what Vice Mayor Cruz's desire is. I'm not sure for District Four, so I, I'm full on board. I just want to be clear that, you know, we're, we're trying to massage this into the budget as you've asked. And I'm not sure what the will of the District Four Commissioner is, so I want to make sure that I'm clear on that before we do that.
Sure, and I'm sorry for not being clear myself, but I've been approached by a couple citizens in that district. And again, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Kelly also, but, you know, if someone asks, asks me what we can do, I'm going to respond. And I don't want to tell them no, talk to Commissioner Kelly. I'm not going to do that.
All right, one more. Commissioner Kelly?
Can I respond? Sorry. So, um, I, though, have not heard from any residents in District Four about it, except for, I did get one email because you know, talk about that at the parks. So I am fine with you directing people, because I would like to hear from my District Four residents as far as what they, what they're looking at. I've heard mixed reviews. I've heard all kinds of different stuff. I've spoken to staff about that, that property quite a bit. So, and there's, there's mixed feelings. It's a plot of land that has been a, a bit of a battle for as long as it's been sitting there. So but I am happy to, for you to direct people from my district to me. I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I answer emails, I answer phone calls. So so, so that is, that's that. But, and then on the future agenda items, the only, I think we talked about it at one point, actually putting dates on these so that we know, so they don't forever sit on future agenda items. So you brought up the parks, but they're still sitting here with TBDs. So I'm just wondering if we can, if we can have dates so that we know when we're going to be talking about them in the future, even if it's months out, just so that it's, it doesn't just sit in futurism. We don't just keep wondering what's going on. So that's just my input on.
I'd agree on that point. It's always good to put some sort of date, even if you have to change it again later, because it's not ready yet. But let's put something down as a target. Vice Mayor Cruz, you had your hand up.
Yes. To piggyback on what you just mentioned, I think that a lot of these issues correlate with each other, and as we're talking about parks, we have to think about the park impact fund. Because that is, that is the best direct way that, as far as I understand, to be able to build and develop new parks. So we have to be mindful that there are limited funds in that, in the budget, which are about $550,000, if I remember correctly. And so, you know, we have to, I think, do things gradually, and as you mentioned, it's, it's your district as well. I don't want to overstep on your district. But for those that definitely want to build or parks or have those desires in their district, and it's something that we could do, I'm currently working with staff to evaluate and to look into a study of the park impact fees that will come back to us as a board, so. And I think that's the, the best way, as we develop and as we move forward, it's the best way to build capacity for future parks in Boynton Beach. And so if, I think, A and then B, right? So that's kind of where I'm going with this. And I do understand that it's in a future agenda with no date. But right now, I'm trying to focus and trying to build some information to come back to the board with, so that you guys can have more information and we can make a decision in the future.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from my colleagues? Just to, go ahead, Commissioner Turkin, then we'll go to, we'll go to Mr. Mack.
About the parks, we had the, the outside consultant, I had the Zoom meeting with them, whoever hired them, great job, very knowledgeable, and it seems like they got a lot of good work. If that was you, Andrew, then I can never see you that there, because I'm short. So thank you very much. It was a great conversation.
Another question, Mayor, if you don't mind?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mack.
I just want to make sure that, again, we, we're directing staff with this height discussion, Commissioner Turkin. I just want to make sure, because that we get, that we bring back the ordinance that you're looking for, if that's what you're looking for, correct?
So what, what I mentioned last commission meeting was to draft that language. I believe Adam, it was example one, if I'm not mistaken. And then I know we have to also discuss at the CRA board, because I think these things kind of mesh together. Adam, can you clarify on that?
Oh, one second, one second. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner, Adam Temple, Development Director. Yes, so option, option A, which is what Commissioner Turkin requested the last meeting, that would be to update the land development regulations to lower the height, the height to 85 feet. So that was, that was option A. And mechanically, how, how we bring forth land development regulations, they would go before the Planning and Development Board, then they would come before the City Commission. And obviously, the, the CRA redevelopment plan is, it guides a lot of our, our, our planning staff's recommendations. So it would, it would be a good idea mechanically also to revisit the, the CRA plan as well.
Mr. Temple, if you could help me remember, because it's been a little bit since we've seen that presentation, was option A the one with the CRA plan being amended?
No, sir.
Which one was that?
I don't have all the options in front of me, but one of the options just, just was to revisit, to make the changes in the, in the CRA plan.
Okay.
Option A was to, to lower the height to 85 feet.
And also draft language to prevent litigation, I think, too, was in there, that, Amanda did a great job with that presentation. So just on the record, there was, there was a little bit more to that, to protect those who have already had, I think, approved site plans was one. And then there was another concern that could be brought forward for litigation, but drafting the language to, I guess, grandfather in some of those plans and, and developers. Just so you guys, that was on, that was in that option.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's, I think we have enough information to work for that.
We'll bring forth, we have consensus from the commission that this is what you're wanting, correct?
This is his request to bring back and for a discussion. So ultimately, we have to see it. Like I said, it's been a while. I have to review the options.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and we will be, I know with the budget workshops, since we're talking about height, it was discussed to get a recommendation from the Planning and Development Board. When we bring the land development regulation update through the Planning and Development Board, that would, that will come with a, with a recommendation from the board. And we did plan to give them that same presentation that we gave in the workshop as well.
Yep, that, that'd be great. I'd like to get P and D's recommendation and then have that brought back to the commission. I guess that would be the proper protocol. Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from my colleagues or staff, or any clarifications?
Yes, Mr. Mack, go ahead. It's okay.
Sorry.
Better to get it out now.
Well, I just want to make sure, because, I mean, we have it on the agenda for, on the future agenda for the discussion of the park in Leisureville. I just want to make sure, are you wanting it as a discussion, or is it going to be just like Commissioner Turkin, where you're looking forward to be in the budget to make sure we have funds for the design and construction? Or is it just design at this point? Exactly what are we looking for?
Definitely want to put money in the budget for it, but I do want to get together with Jim Sissick and talk about it. I haven't really had the time, honestly.
Okay.
Talk with, like, do kind of like a town hall and discuss that with them.
Okay.
But in the meantime, I definitely want to set money aside on the budget for that.
For design and construction, just for the design this year, and then we'll, or we can, we can look at that. It's hard to budget for something that we don't know what it's going to be. So that's why I'm asking. So, you know, we'll make sure that the money's budgeted.
For now, the design. But I, I see those park impact fund fees as like, lock them up for these two parks that we're looking to do.
But we can advance it. We'll make sure that we have the money in the budget, or it'll be proposed with the budget. You guys decide whether you approve it. At that point, later on in the year, if we finish designs and you still want to move forward with the construction, we can amend the budget or use, use a park impact fee. So that is something, so I just want to make sure that.
So that is something, so I just want to make sure that we remove that one from the eye, from the future agenda. If, if you're correct, if that's what you'd like.
I want to keep it on there.
Okay.
And I would prefer not to go to the general fund. I know we're getting detailed, but I, I would prefer to take it from the park impact fee fund, because that's kind of the purpose of it, and it's part of what developers pay when construction is done in Boynton Beach. So I think it's the appropriate place to take it from.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioner Hay, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I'm doing something here that I don't normally do, is read text message while I'm up here. But there was a text message from David Katz, who said he's had his hand up from the beginning of our public audience, and he never got called. So I'm just, just an FYI, because I'm sure you hear something in the future. So just a FYI.
I asked Manny to check numerous times. What can, you know, I'm sure they're doing their best.
We're certainly doing our best, and I have timestamped photos showing that. I did not see his hand, his name with his hand raised during the time of public comments, but we can certainly investigate further.
All right, thank you for doing the timestamp photos. We want to make sure we get to everyone. Again, final comments, anything else before we conclude for the evening? Hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.